Okay, I'd like to call the meeting order for December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, warrant bills all signed up?
Yes.
Yep.
Approval of the agenda?
Um, I would actually like to make a edit to the agenda. Um, I move that we add Abbott Road um to the top of new business.
Okay.
Second in.
All in favor? Okay, minutes of the last meeting?
I would, I move to approve the minutes of the December sixth um meeting.
All in favor, uh, second?
Second in.
All in favor? Town administrator, weekly update?
No update this week.
What's that?
No update this week.
Okay, I was gonna say great, but.
You did that last time, you know.
Department head community share updates. Uh, Tom?
No, no, um, I'm liaison, not department head. I'm sorry, did you want me to talk about something?
Did I skip, did I, no, you know, I'm sorry.
You said department head, and so.
Then I looked down, I saw, I looked at the liaison, I'm sorry, Will, can you come on and save me here?
So I got a, a couple of things, um, so yesterday I came in, I talked to Kelly and um, well, first of all, I, I had a phone conversation with a paving company. Um, they're trying to line up our work for the springtime, they got three roads they need to finish for us, so um, we talked about Peck Road and uh, to finish the road is uh forty-five thousand nine oh eight, and the account right now has forty thousand two twenty-three ninety-three, so um, I'm here tonight to ask if, can I take the money out of the District Two paving to pay, finish the road or, or no?
Now, you said forty-eight thousand, what it's gonna cost?
Uh, to finish it's forty-five nine oh eight.
And you've got forty?
Forty thousand two twenty-two.
A few thousand, does that include all your shoulders and everything?
Yeah, that's, that, this is just to finish paving, but we shouldered it already, but they're only putting an inch on it, so.
Shoulders are done, is what I'm hearing.
What's that?
Shoulders are done.
Yeah, we did them just because of the way the road was, we shouldered it this fall, but to finish paving the road, I think I needed like about fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any issues with that, um, I mean, what, cause what we're trying to do here is we're trying not to, you know, we're trying to separate these road projects, so they're all, so there won't be just paving sitting aside, but how much money does he have in his paving? How did he have in his paving?
I'm not, I, when I talked to Kelly, she wasn't sure because we got the bills for Buzzell Road, Peck Road, just like two weeks ago, she, she was waiting for Mark Roy to send over the uh, the updated.
He did, he sent the reports, I can tell you, give me a minute.
Cause that's what we're not sure of, how much is left?
Can I suggest that we, I'd like to make a motion that we approve additional funds out of District Two paving to sure, to cover the full cost of finishing which road?
Uh, Peck Road.
Peck Road, uh, subject to confirmation by the treasurer, there's sufficient funds in the account.
Second in.
Okay, uh, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, it's fine, I didn't know if we wanted to get a, a roundabout number to, you know, like eight, nine thousand dollar number or something like that to stick with, or you just, cause typically.
And not to exceed, I didn't say not to exceed the six thousand.
Because the problem is, we normally haven't come up and give us numbers, so.
So can we modify that to put in a number, what number did you suggest?
What number would be good for you?
He said six thousand.
Six thousand dollars, okay, we said six thousand in that motion.
He is gonna have to do a little more shouldering, right?
Well, that's why I asked him, but he said he weren't gonna.
Yeah, we're gonna see what it looks like in the springtime, so.
So why don't you do this, what do you think it's gonna cost to shoulder that road?
Hmm, I'd have to, I'd have to look and see what it costs.
Would that come out of paving, David, the shouldering?
The, the, the paving is set up to be pa, for pave, usually, you can use, we always were able to do this, paving, getting ready for the paving and shoulders out of that paving, so um, but if he, it'd be better off if he did it all at one shot.
Yeah, yeah.
So would you, would, would it be better off that we, we appropriate a little extra so you could do that also?
I think it uh was like, it's probably like five grand, I think, to do it, I think this fall.
How about if we say up to an amount of twelve thousand dollars, will that cover it?
That's, that's fair.
Is that reasonable for everyone?
I think that seems.
Okay, up to an amount.
Come back to us.
Yeah, that's right, up to an amount of twelve thousand dollars, insert it in that motion, been moved.
I'll second that.
Second.
All in favor?
There you go.
Okay, there you go.
And um, so while we're talking about paving, I know we're working on budget, so do you guys want me to put paving projects forward for this year, seeing we don't? So we're not gonna wait for the road assessment then?
Yeah, they had, they don't have an update on when it's gonna be ready, so I, I would think we move forward as scheduled, right?
Let's get your ideas in advance, and if we get the assessment done, we can put the two together, it makes sense, great, we'll go forward. It doesn't mean we can't modify it.
Alright, no, I just.
By the time we get to the budget, right?
Yeah, I think we're, at this point in time, how many roads did you have last year that you had on your side that you wanted to pave?
Well, I was just trying to finish West Shore Drive last year.
Well, you're gonna have two, you're gonna budget for two this year, correct?
Yeah.
So find, make, you know, find two projects that we can do it just like Peck Road.
Hmm.
You know, budget those, those four roads, two on each side for now, just for this year, because you're gonna, you know, you're gonna a lot of budgeting to do, and uh, get FR or whoever, get some quotes.
Yeah, we, I went out yesterday with them.
You did?
Yeah, I got numbers for.
What roads you thinking about?
Uh.
Sam Water Road, yeah.
Uh, no.
By the way, there's a big pothole by my house, it sucks.
Yeah, I, I, I know, I'll fill it in, um, uh, we rode on County Road, uh, to finish that, we rode, yeah, County Road, I, I have the list on my phone, you give me a minute.
Okay.
Uh, so we went up on Young's Ridge, because I don't think there's gonna be enough money to finish Young's Ridge and the paving, to surface it for the springtime. I don't think there's gonna be enough money, so I think I'm gonna.
What he has in his regular?
I don't, I don't think there's gonna, I, until I know what's in there, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
So there's, there's that, we rode that road, uh, that was a finish, that was a finish, then.
How much was the paving budget in total last year?
Two fifty, then.
Yeah, it was five hundred and all.
Five hundred?
Yeah.
More than that, wasn't it?
Well, Adam had the extra for Peck Road, I believe.
Yeah, so in total, what do we do in paving, uh, in, uh, what did the current year budget have for paving in total?
Including Peck Road?
We got two fifty each.
Yeah, two fifty, there was five, and then nine, I think it was ninety for Peck Road, so what's that?
Roughly six hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So as you're planning on whatever roads this year, I think we ought to give him some indication of a target. I mean, if you pick four roads and it's a million two, that ain't gonna work, so we gotta, we gotta make it fit within some reasonable number, and we ought to give him, if we can give him some guidance.
We've made, we've made huge improvements on our numbers on our paving for, in the last couple of years.
Yeah.
Um, I think if we could stick with the five, six hundred-ish area.
There you go.
For both sides.
That works for me, I don't know about you.
Yeah, could we, could you manage?
Let's start there and see what you come up with, and if you've got a compelling reason to do something different, let's talk.
Alright.
Fair enough?
That works.
As of November thirtieth, there was ninety-six thousand four seventy-nine left in that paving account.
Ninety-six.
In the structural line.
Okay, alright.
Out of the two fifty.
What's it gonna cost to do the Young's Ridge?
Uh, I got it right here, um.
It's just overlay, isn't it?
Yeah, it's uh, just the surface, it's fifty-one thousand.
So you gotta look one of them.
Fifty, well, you can still do Buzzell Road.
Oh, he didn't, he didn't even mention that.
Buzzell Road, to surface that, oh, Jesus Christ.
So one of them's not gonna get done?
Uh, it's um, that's, that's seventy, that's seventy thousand just to surface that.
So you're like twenty-five plus the eleven, yeah.
And just, I had so many problems with the company we got the shoulder machine from, all the pricing, the paving this year's got the shoulder gavel right in it, so.
You know, everybody else is doing it like that.
I'd say this year, we worked on it more than we even used it, I'm not even, I'm not bothering anymore, so.
Right, it's right in.
I'm just, this is what they did in all these ones, so.
Nice.
Um, so I guess I'll plan on finishing what I can, and I guess I'll, I'll have to, what I can't finish, we'll have to finish.
You've got other stuff to do anyways, right?
Right, yeah, there's stuff to do, like County Road, uh, we rode on that road, County Road, uh, we did look at Sanborn Road, so we got, I got some options, so.
Yeah, there is a pothole down in my driveway.
Alright.
Gee, I didn't hear that.
Oh, you did catch that? You wanna give them that? Yeah.
Alright, now that's it, and then uh, uh, the rain the other day, I had a, uh, just two spots uh, on uh, New Bridge Road, it came over the road like it always does, and then County Road in the swamp right there, it came over the road, but.
New Bridge Road?
Yeah, right in front of like Pat Stevens, that swamp fills right up, and it, it didn't go over the, well, it was.
You know, it goes under the road there, you know that, right?
Yeah, a little bit, but it was a lot.
You can see the dirty water coming out, and the lake on the other side goes underneath the road's rocks there.
Yeah, there's a lot, there was a lot of water going, that morning, so I coned it off, and then County Road, um, down in the swamp there, that came over the road a little bit. And then Monday night, I had to go out and just hit those couple of spots with some sand, you know, get those couple of spots on Milton Mills Road, took care of those, New Bridge, County Road, Lebanon Road, and that's the only, Lebanon Road, they're doing a bunch of logging on Lebanon Road right now, so I went down there and talked to the gentleman on Monday, and they're gonna be kinda cautious in there working, so, um, because I, it looks like we're gonna get some more rain on Monday.
Yeah, you know, I mean, that's what really stinks about this time of the year, is when you, you get a freeze, it's almost like springtime.
Yeah.
You know, where it freezes up, then thaws, uh, the roads get wrecked.
He was, they're good about it, they're just not like, like doing some, I mean, they're like clearcutting some laws down there, so they're gonna be in there for a little bit, I mean, they were good about it, they're just gonna keep an eye on things, so.
Are they gonna sweep the road and stuff and?
Yeah, I told them to clean the road up, and then I think Monday, if we get the rain, they're gonna dig out the uh, the landings, probably put some riprap in there or something, cause it's, one of them, it's wicked.
Is there a specific timeframe or condition that determines when you post the road for, uh?
It's funny, it's funny.
I'm just reacting what, what you're saying, if we're exposing the roads now to the heavy trucking because of the conditions, um, well, when we post the roads, how do we decide when to post them?
I never had to deal with it, I can't, this time.
Well, we do post them.
One year, one January, we had a thaw, I mean, it was real bad, and everything turned to mud, we talked about posting in January once, just for, for temporary, but, I mean.
This is hundreds of thousands of dollars that can be, no? Am I missing something here?
It just, it, it, it's just never been done.
Right, yeah, no, I mean, I, I talked to the, one of the gentlemen in Sanford that actually called me about it, and uh, we talked about, and they're, if this weather stays up, they, they have a lot of logging going on, on another road just down from uh, on the line there, and uh, they talked about maybe having to do something, cause I mean, there's, we could have some damage here, like this, like Dave said, it keeps.
By do something, you mean posting it?
Well, I don't, they didn't wanna say that.
You gotta see what we're allowed to do before we do it.
Right, they didn't want.
No, I didn't know if there was some standard that is applied as to when to post the road, you would think there would be.
Well, usually the standard is when the frost comes out, and you know, it's supposed to be frozen now, it's supposed to have snow on the ground.
Yeah.
We should anyways, but uh, it's coming.
Well, you know, that's just.
I, I gotta tell you, this is probably gonna be happening in the future with the way the winters are changing anyway, so maybe we just need to.
I can remember, I bet fifteen years ago, I took a contract on a road, and I never put my plow down in the sand until after New Year's.
Yeah.
That was fifteen years ago, so you have those years.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna keep an eye on it, just cause there's, that road, like, that road just holds so much water, so we're just gonna keep an eye on it.
Yeah, you know, you, you know, and you could also tell them too, you know, coming in and out is the most important part, that's usually where they rip stuff up.
Right.
Um, you know, if, if they don't have any rock or anything there, make them do it.
Right, no, we talked, we talked about that, though, where they are right now, they put a bunch of gravel, and it's not bad, but when they get on the other side of the road, I think they're gonna have to give it some attention.
They go on to the swamp side?
Uh, yeah, if you go down there on the right, they're cut, they cut on a house, and then they stripped it right across the road, so I, they, I told them to call me if they got any questions, but we're gonna keep an eye on it.
If it's the same company I used to have to deal with, I asked them to sweep the road, they made a mess on one of my roads real bad, and they didn't do it.
No, I talked to them about that, and they, they were, they were good about it, they said they'd keep everything cleaned out, but I'm gonna keep an eye on it, so, that, that's what's going on right now, so.
Okay, uh, any more department here?
Looks like Sam's getting up.
So we had our Christmas tree lighting on Saturday, things went amazing, we had awesome weather for it, lots of kiddos came out. Um, it looks like we did have one little fault, we'll have to invest in some new lights next year.
What happened?
Um, I went to go check because I noticed it was unplugged, so someone must have caught the fact that it must have been sparking up or something between the extension cord and the lights cord, because both ends are fried. Um, so.
Were they pulled apart?
They were pulled apart.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the extension cord is in the trash, and the lights are just on the tree looking pretty, but not plugged in, because I won't plug them in again, I don't think you can.
That ought to be fixable.
Yeah, put new lights up.
We're just, you know, repair the, the frayed cord. Unless it's, how old is it, is it like?
I don't know.
Fifty years old, we gotta.
There's plenty of lights.
Yeah, I'd rather just go buy new lights instead of repairing it.
Plenty of lights, oh, okay, alright, okay.
Wait until they're all on discount on clearance and go out and get some.
We have some that weren't here, you could use those, right, just replace them, so it's lit up for the rest of the year?
Can try, but now we don't have the extension cord, so we'd have to grab an extension from somebody.
You can grab one.
Um, and then the other thing is, is we've started basketball and cheer, things are going amazing. The only ones that currently have had any games is our seven, eight boys, um, they've been doing their tournament weekends, um, in Saco for the league that they've been part of. Otherwise, we're not starting any games until January. Um, we do have a question that my board has wanted me to come forth and ask about using, it's called the Game Changer app. It's the same app that the school uses with the coaches and all of the kids, um, basically what you do is the parents would accept the invite on the app, it's a free app, and it is, um, one that you do have to have an invite code to be able to be included in that group. It has a live feed of the schedule, so if there's any schedule changes, that changes in it, also, you're able to add and remove contacts, um, cause one of the things that we're finding when we do like a text chain or something with some of the parents, is if you have over twenty kids on a team, you can't add anymore unless they all have iPhones. Um, and we're having issues with some people saying they're not getting the messages, other people getting the messages, so then we have like five different threads going.
So the one you're gonna do now, it goes to every phone, right?
Right now, it goes to the phones through the text, but we'll find out that somebody's not getting the text, and then we have to do a separate.
So this new application will address that issue?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, yeah.
Yeah, and it's the same one the school's been using, so I feel pretty confident with it.
And you said you could just, the committee discussed it at the last meeting?
Yeah, we've actually discussed it the past year.
Any cost?
Nope.
All free. Committee wants to do it?
Committee wants to do it.
Schools doing it?
Schools doing, yeah.
There you go.
I, I mean, I think if it's no cost and if the school's using it, and it, if it is effective, I don't see why not, at least try it.
Committee wants to, I, I think it's great.
Yeah, as long as it's no cost.
Yeah, no cost.
And I, I would just say, keep track of kind of how it goes this season, and then if there are any issues, whatever, bring that back to the committee and see if there's, you know, how it goes, use this as like a testing season or something.
Did, did this, did the rec committee take a vote on this?
I, I, essentially, yes, we haven't, we didn't.
I think that's what David's trying to remember.
Yeah, we didn't actually do, I did, all in favor, it was more of a, can we do this, can we do this, can we do this, and it was everybody asking.
The tree lighting meeting, cause.
They've asked about it at the last tree lighting meeting, it was brought up, I think we've talked about it for the last three meetings.
Just wanna make sure the committee's voted, that's all that.
When's your, when's your next meeting?
We don't have one scheduled at this time, cause it was supposed to be, and then with the tree lighting getting kind of the off dates, we ended up having it off thrown.
We gotta have a vote on that, that's what they wanna do, that's what I'm saying, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
Not being voted on, and uh, you know, because I mean, if we do that, and we go on, go ahead, the, the recommendation hasn't really come from the rec committee, correct?
I, I would say it definitely has come from the rec committee, because I knew nothing about the Game Changer app until they brought it forward.
Was there a vote on it?
To sit there and say, I, all in favor?
Yay, nay, motion made, yes, no.
There was a motion made, and then there was no all in favor or anything.
Okay, so that means there wasn't a vote, cause it needs a vote, needs a vote.
Go back and get a vote.
Okay, so if we get a vote, just come back and let you know, or are we good to go?
No, 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 get a vote, come back to us, and then we'll do all this whole thing again.
Alright.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Any more department head community updates?
Nope, okay, we're gonna go down to the liaison updates, Tom?
Yes, uh, municipal management, um, we had a discussion today with the auditors, we received a first draft of the audit report. Um, we went over a number of questions they have, they're making various adjustments to it. We expect to get what I hope is a final draft in a week to ten days, we'll review that again, um, and uh, at that point, my guess is we should put it on the, the agenda for the, for, for the committee, we, I could share it with you, I can walk, walk you through it, and we ought to have a formal vote to accept it, and then we can sign, then we tell the auditors, uh, it's been accepted, and they can go forward and release it. Does that work for everyone? Uh, there are surpluses, I can't tell you how much, cause the numbers bounced around so much today that I, uh, I, I couldn't tell you what they are, but I, I think there'll be nice surpluses for both the school and the town, so everything looked, uh, looked in good shape, I'll just leave it at that, and we'll see what the final numbers come out at. We've started the budget process, um, memos have gone out to all department heads on the budget process, uh, we're doing it a little differently this year. We're basically taking, uh, and uh, the entire salary component of the budget is, is, is sort of being removed from what we're asking department heads to comment on. If they have new positions they would like, or changes in hours, or they think somebody's salary needs to be adjusted for market reasons, they cer, we certainly want them to provide that, but otherwise, the, the select board will simply be able to apply whatever rate of increase we think is appropriate uh, for all town employees, and we'll be able to apply those, and there's really no need for department heads to have to worry about that math, cause that's really all it is, is a formula and math, um, so I think we're on track, we've, we, we, they've been asked to produce their budgets by the end of December.
Right.
Um, we're, we did the revenue budgets today, when, when I was here, we're doing the municipal management next Wednesday, and um, the budget process should be much more streamlined this year than what we've seen in the past. Um, warrant and finance committee is, um, did you have something you wanted to say about that?
We are having a meeting, it's coming when, uh, Monday.
Okay.
We, we've scheduled.
That's right, okay, so, um, and at that meeting, they're really gonna uh, get themselves organized to start with us, the budget process, and move towards um, a completion of the budget sometime in, do we have that date?
May, uh, in March, March.
March, yeah, actually, actually, we hope to have everything done with the budget sometime in the end of February.
Yes, but I was hoping you were gonna sign it by the fifteenth.
Yeah, so, so we wanna get everything wrapped up in the next uh, two months.
Right, yeah, we, we've got it for, is that the eighteenth?
Monday you say eighteenth, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Six o'clock next Monday.
And uh, APAT, we're having continued discussions about uh, some items that have been brought forward by the, by the director there, and we're gonna continue to that discussion, cemetery committee has not met yet, met, met yet, and I'm gonna reach out and contact the chair.
Okay, Ed?
Sure, met with the fire chief on Monday, uh, he called me up, wondered to know if I could meet with him, and I did. It was a two and a half hour meeting, the next meeting we're gonna have is gonna be, it's gonna come in front of us, there's a bunch of things that he needs to explain to us. Yeah, very, the, uh, fraction of that meeting was about budgets, but I told him the next meeting we have about budgets is gonna be with the warrant and finance liaison, and we can wrap up that.
So he's coming for other non-budget related issues?
Well, he just, we need to bring him in here to discuss a bunch of different things, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Transfer station, I met with Robin on Monday as well, there was a little incident, not an incident up there, there was a problem with the MSW container. And we've got to get down to the base of what happened. What happened was, either the container wasn't locked in properly by the driver that hauls it, or something happened after the fact, I don't think anything happened after the fact. The container wasn't locked in like it was supposed to be locked in, and in the use of it, the container would be, you know, was pushed out, and it damaged part of the container, so no damage to our stuff.
I see.
So, um, Robin has pictures of it, of what happened, I did talk to the company that came out Saturday, and mitigated the problem.
But we're gonna have a big bill from that, from what I understand.
There is a bill coming from them.
So who do we expect that's gonna pay for that?
It's about eight hundred dollars, um, that's the thing we gotta figure out, um, but I didn't go any further with it than that.
So we think one happened, something happened, and they think something else happened?
They think that somebody loosened it up, and then, yeah, tampered with it. I don't see where anybody could tamper with it. But I also don't understand why the driver didn't hook it properly if that was the problem.
So are we gonna get a bill every time the driver doesn't hook it up, right?
So I, I told Robin, I said, from here on out, inspect that every time that container moves, make sure it's hooked properly, so, he said he would.
Okay.
So yeah, so there was an issue, there's an issue there, they tried to say that, oh, you got kids playing with it, I don't believe any kids went up in there and.
They said that?
What?
Yeah, there's no kids that went in there, it's not an accessible area.
There was no other damage done up there?
No.
Just this one particular obscure thing?
What it is, is these two dogs on the side, the container comes in place, the dogs go in place, and you tighten a big ratchet, basically, a big, a big screw.
Holds it place well.
Holds it right in place, so as the, the, so when you throw your trash in the hopper, there's a ram that comes out and shoves it into the container. One side was not hooked in the proper place, it was down below.
Yeah.
So as it pushed, it, it started pulling that side, dog eyed, so.
Is that something that can be adjusted by hand, or do you need a wrench?
No, it's adjusted by hand.
Oh, it is, okay.
You drop them in place, um.
No, I mean, if someone tampered with it, wouldn't they need a wrench, or, no, okay.
No, no, it is a, um, are you familiar with the way a, a chain binder works?
Yeah.
Not the, not the spring loaded ones, but the screw ones, that's exactly what it is.
Okay.
So it just locks in place, they tighten them down, and that's it.
Okay.
Unlikely that the driver didn't put it in the proper place, but I guess that's.
So this point.
About the only thing that.
They, they.
It's a he say, she says.
He, they're coming up with, some kid did it?
Yeah.
You know, uh, you know.
That isn't the case.
I, I don't know, when in doubt, see if you can split it with them.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we've had this issue before, because when, remember when they took the top, they hit the uh.
Right.
Okay, and they blamed us for it.
Yeah, that damaged our.
So, so we both take four hundred dollar responsibility.
So it wasn't, you didn't call him, did you, Robin, or, yeah, you, you're the one that called Triano?
Yes.
Or did Bob call Triano?
Bob called Robin.
Okay, Robin was not in that day, uh, Bob called Triano, Triano got ahold of Atlantic, who is the company that works on compactors and whatnot, and Atlantic sent a rep in to fix it, which really didn't take much fixing, it's not even a dollars worth of fixing.
So are you, we're gonna, am I hearing you say that you wanna talk about negotiating that bill in half when it comes in?
We gotta do something like that.
Negotiate it, that's all, yeah, whatever, kinda, seems fair.
Yeah.
Send an email.
This, they're right there, you guys?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's like.
Negotiate zero, but.
You know, it's, it's, they're truckers there, I mean.
That's what I think.
The only, other than that is, oh yeah, somebody went and hooked it, no, you guys just hook it up.
This basically is down underneath.
You know best, I, I'm just, you know, at this stage, uh, who's the vendor?
Triano.
Triano, long-term vendor?
Yeah, they're the ones that are all fresh.
We've had a, a good relationship with them and so on, so, I don't know, yeah, I don't know, I take those things into account.
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand, you know, the squabble over eight hundred dollars, but it's, it's the point that counts, is, you know, it's like.
So we both take a little pain.
Yeah.
So, you know, they won't do it again, we won't, we'll make sure it doesn't happen again.
Yeah, and like I say, I instructed Robin to make sure every time that thing gets unhooked, so the container moves, to double check that, so, um, what else do I have? One other thing, we had a meeting yesterday with the Tri-County, it's called Tri-County, hmm, was it Trash?
Tri-County, yep.
Yeah.
So it's our county.
Yeah, um, it's, it's a bunch of towns that are been trying to negotiate a new contract with.
Casella. Is that Casella?
Casella, or whoever's gonna handle our, the removal of our trash, the disposal of the trash. Um, the contract comes up June of twenty-five, but they're working to try to get a new contract in place, hopefully by February of this year, this coming year.
Same company.
So, maybe.
Maybe.
We talked to, we talked to, to Casella yesterday, we're gonna talk to uh, Waste Management, and we're gonna talk to, what's the third one up there, Robin, the Maine Eco? Yeah, so about, you know, what the, what the different rates are gonna be to get rid of the trash, so, and there may be some new things coming down the road for recycling as well, so. But it's all in the works, but they were looking for reps to be on the contract negotiation team, so.
You have a meeting tomorrow? Workshop?
Oh, yeah, workshop up at the transfer station, just to go over some different things with DEP and our engineer.
Robin, you... Come up here for a minute. You scheduled a appointment with DEP?
I did.
Did?
Yep.
For what reason?
To find out what we can do up there.
Okay.
Really.
Okay. Did we talk about that last week?
We talked about it two weeks ago, yeah.
Two weeks ago, yeah. What was that all about?
You decided we didn't want DEP on the property.
Well, you make it sound like, I don't know, like I...
Well, I don't know how else to say it.
Training order against them or something.
I don't know how else to say it. You wasn't in favor of DEP coming on the property.
No, I wasn't in favor of dragging DEP up there to go look at what? What were they gonna go look at? What are they gonna go look at?
They're gonna look at... They're gonna tell me, Ed, and the engineer where we can dig, what we can fill over, what we can...
We know what we're not allowed to fill over, right?
I don't.
You don't?
No.
I think when Charlie was up here, he showed you, told you, he's got the whole layout of what...
Right. If you look at a plan, and I look at a plan...
So I guess from now on, okay?
Yeah.
Before you make a phone call to any State Department, okay? Then we better make sure we vote on it next time.
Okay.
Okay? Because what you did is you went from what I said to do, and you said, "No, I don't like his," so you went to a different selectman and he got his permission, is what you did the other day.
DEP has already been notified that we're gonna do project up there, so they're gonna come and do stuff anyways.
I understand that, but that's besides the point. That wasn't what we discussed the other day, and it...
And I think it's the best part of the town to have DEP involved in it.
Okay. You still not getting what I'm saying here?
No, I'm...
You went around, circumventing me, to another selectman. How do you know the other ones wanted that?
I don't.
You don't, because what you did is you just went, it's like going to mom, mom says no, and you went to dad instead. That's what you did.
Okay.
I just...
Well, I'm looking up for the town of Acton.
I deal with DEP all the time, you don't, okay? I don't wanna invite a problem. The engineer...
What's the problem? You got something to hide up there? You know something that we don't?
No. The engineer will be taking care of that, okay? He can invite the issues. That's the whole idea of it.
You already did.
Did he call DEP and tell them?
They caught... Not to set a date, but they called them last April.
Okay, but you're not...
When I went up to... When I... Hey, I'm talking.
No. I'm the chair. You're not understanding what I'm getting to here.
No, I'm not.
You went and did something that we told... I told you not to do.
Yeah, you told me not to. Did we vote on it?
Exactly. That's what we're getting to here. We're gonna do that. So you're gonna, as a department man, you're gonna go to the chair, and go behind his back, and get somebody else's permission. Is that what you're saying?
No.
That's what you did.
Okay, that's what I did. I did it on the best interest of the town of Acton. That's what I did. If you don't like it, David, that's what it is.
After a select... Chair of the board told you not to, you did it anyways because you felt it was better.
Because DEP told me to. Should... They should be involved in it.
You obviously don't get it, okay?
No, I don't.
You don't get procedure, okay? Next time, there will be a procedure, okay? You're not gonna run off to the next guy who say, "Yes, we'll have to vote on it next time."
Okay. Well, they're coming tomorrow to protect the town of Acton.
I get that.
Yeah.
I get that, that they're coming.
Yeah.
Because you want them there, and you...
I think it's the best interest of the town of Acton.
Okay, I'm glad...
You don't think so. Just because you don't think it's the best thing of Acton, I do.
I didn't want them there until there was a plan in place.
Why?
Because I just told you, because I wanna see a plan in place.
So what's the plan got to do with them coming on property to let us know what we're gonna do?
Robin, I just wanna...
Yeah, go ahead.
I understand what you're saying, you wanna do what's the best town of Acton. We, as select people, we also wanna do what's best in the town of Acton.
Yeah.
And part of that is having a laid-out process and a plan, and I think...
We don't know what the plan is.
And I understand how you... That you're feeling a little frustrated right now.
You're damn right I am.
But I just want to uplift the fact that it's... We kinda wanted to make sure... I mean, I don't think David's saying that they weren't gonna get involved at some point, but we wanted to follow certain steps and procedures. I don't think there's anything in regards to... I mean, I think accusations of Mr. Lynch wanted to hide anything is, I think, a little bit out of left field, but I think that...
That's not how I feel.
We are...
I'm glad you feel that way.
The employers. When the employers, when we talk, we discuss every matter that comes to this board, and you hear these discussions, and we make decisions. As the person who's employed by the town, we expect you to respect what we have to say. If you do have concerns, which it sounds like you do, and I respect that, and they're all valid, we expect you to come to us and say, "You said this, these are my concerns." So you say to the next to us afterwards...
He didn't wanna talk to me last meeting. No, we just don't want him here at all. Period.
And Robin, and I hear that, and I think we... Now, we understand a mistake. We should've made a very clear, "This is the vote, this is where we stand." I can see that confusion, but when there's ever any doubts, you say, you send an email to Jen and say, "I would like to be put on the agenda for next meeting. I would like to bring up this matter and have a discussion and kinda hear all these points," and it would...
So what is the good of the ASON thing? I went to my ASON, which is my superior to you guys.
Yeah.
What's the big deal?
Hold on.
I guess the problem is I should've brought it up to the board.
We should clarify that, that the department heads report to the Board of Selectmen. There is a liaison who acts as sort of the primary communicator, channel of communication between the department head and the board, but when it comes down to it, the board manages department heads. And so, you got a direction from one department head to said to do or not do this, and you happen to have a different opinion. I get it, but his opinion counts more than yours when it comes to these matters. I don't know how else to say it. There is an organizational structure, there is a chain of command, and department heads need to respect the fact that the Board of Selectmen is... Has been voted in to take these responsibilities and make these decisions. Department heads cannot simply ignore what the Board of Selectmen has stated. Now, if you didn't like it, you could've come back another week, you could talk to your liaison, he could be your advocate, but it was clear how the board felt. When David said that about DEP, I didn't say a word. I'm sitting here listening to it. There was no vote, but I believed in what he... I agreed with what he said. I didn't think there was a need for a vote. I don't know how the other two felt, but I was supportive of David's position. So you had two selectmen that you decided that your opinion was more valuable and more correct than two selectmen. Robin, you can't do that.
Why? Why? What is the problem?
So, this was the issue.
Of bringing them in? What's your problem of bringing them in?
Why don't you just...
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I'm talking now. I deal with DEP. I don't know how much anybody in here deals with DEP. I've dealt with DEP for years and years ago.
Who'd you deal with?
Chris Kopey, I've dealt... Bunches of them, okay?
Well, Chris Kopey is not...
I know Chris isn't there, okay? But I don't think you wanna start doing the references of who's done what here. I'm DEP certified and all that, okay? You got that? So...
The people that's coming is DEP certified.
Listen, listen.
To let us know what we need to do.
Listen, listen. Okay? I am...
You're good.
I am speaking here, okay? There's a procedure.
Yeah.
You just don't call DEP because... But you just wanna come up and look, okay? Have an idea, have a plan. I haven't seen a plan from you, because what we have, we got three plans right now.
Yeah.
Now, we sat down here the other night. We had a bunch of us sat around, and we started going over this and that. Listen, okay?
Yeah.
We went over this.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, it probably wasn't a legit meeting, but we had an individual here that had a lot of knowledge on what was going on up there. A lot of knowledge. He even told you where you can get these pieces of this... The plans, it tells you where the restricted areas are. Fine, okay? But what I wanted to see before we get all these agencies involved, okay, is a plan, before we have them just come up there and start picking things apart. Now, that's besides the point. Now, for me... For you to tell me that I wanna hide something up there, okay?
Well...
Listen, listen.
Yeah.
That's absolutely wrong.
Yeah.
I don't know what I would be hiding.
Yeah.
What would I hide up...
I don't know.
Exactly. So don't... Let's not throw that stuff out there. But what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to protect our best interest, okay? I don't invite issues, okay? If there's an issue that has to be addressed, you call DEP, okay? Is there any issues up there that has to be addressed?
I don't know.
Okay, well, let's not look for any. But at this point in time, I suggested not to call DEP until the engineer got involved and we knew the area we were working in.
But...
Okay? No, 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 no. Now, we've already gone over this, okay?
Yeah.
Now, you keep going over this, you wanna put a road here, you wanna go there?
No.
No, 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 no. Okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I feel what you did was you wanna put that road down through there.
No.
No?
No.
Because I could take it as that, because you went over my...
I made a suggestion.
Because you went over my head. Because after we talked the other night, the other night, we had pretty much agreed that this area is a no-go, okay? Right? But no, you called DEP to make sure we were wrong.
No, that's... I wanna make sure...
This conversation's over at this point.
Have a great night. See you later. You won't see me at another meeting.
Excuse me, Robin, would you come back here, please?
What?
Come back here, please.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. You know you're an employee of the Select Board, right? If we ask you to be back here at the next meeting, you will.
That's right. You have to ask me and take a vote on it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you for coming.
All I was doing is looking up for the town of Acton and where we can do what we can and cannot do up there.
Please.
It don't cost the town of Acton to get DEP involved. If there was a price with it, I would've said yes. Not a problem, but there's no price.
Robin, if you serve a favor... Thank you. Any more...
I take responsibility for this one, because it's my screw-up, so I apologize to the board.
Yeah.
You don't need to do that.
Yeah, you didn't do it.
Anyway.
Okay, so where are we now? Transfer Station. Dan?
Yeah, so today, we had a workshop with the school committee, the entire board, with the entire school committee, to kind of plan out and map out the budget timeline. As some of you may remember, talking past, we were looking at combining the school budget and the town meeting together, so we, you know, sat down and talked what we thought would be reasonable, talking about some of the concerns that the town folks have had in regards to, one would be a good time, one families, everyone or the most people in the town can make it, the length of the meetings, and we were able to come up with a tentative date of Saturday, April 6th, is what we're looking at, and we're gonna be... We have some things to continue to look over of regards to kinda making the meeting a little bit shorter. That's... We know that's a big concern of a lot of peoples, they say the meeting's always long, but that was, I think, a very successful meeting. I think we have a game plan, we have dates we can work back down that, you know, were mentioned last week, so I think we're in good order, we're moving along ahead with that. With the Conservation Forest Committee, last week, we had an individual interested in joining the committee. I did an interview with them, and their recommendation will come up later on in the agenda, and I know that they're gonna be looking at doing a meeting sometime in January, I believe, and if this individual's approved, we will have quorum, so they will be able to have a meeting and generally reach out to them after tonight's vote. And then Mary Grant, I heard that there might be a meeting in January. I feel like I'll hear more about that once they solidify that. And just a random thing, I was able to attend the tree lighting, I helped set up and got a read story time there. It was really good. I was part of the rec board when the town kinda took over the tree lighting and have helped out every year since, and this was, I feel like, the first full year that we had, like, everything out, like, we had the church, because last year they had the construction, so it was really great. It was really, I feel like, successful. There's a lot of families there, there's a lot of activities, I thought it was run really well. So I want to give a shout to the, to the rec committee and the church and everyone who pitched in to help out with that event.
Awesome. Thanks. Where are we?
You.
You, yeah. Do you already do yours?
For, you, you, no update on the Mary Grant or anything, right?
No, just the potential meeting in January, but I'll give an update once I hear.
That's me, Rhodes, Road Committee, well, okay, well, I guess we got that on.
We got it on the new business, don't we?
Abbott Rhodes and a new business.
I'll probably, I'll probably bring that up then. Rhodes, Will and I have got to gather with our road, with the liaison, with the finance committee at some point, we're going to schedule something there. And the rec committee, I attended the meeting the other night. Yeah, I attended the meeting the other night. So I guess that's all I got to say. Well, my liaison updates, but we'll go down to old business. Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four salt bits.
All right, so in your packet, you will see a breakdown from one, two, three, four, five different companies, four of which didn't participate. It's got the tonnage and it's got Eastern at seventy-nine, twenty-four. Harco's, Harco's, am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Hundred dollars and sixty cents per ton, Morton's Salt at eighty-nine, thirty-three, and New England's Salt at two-hundred.
Wow.
That's quite a spread.
The very first line.
Yeah.
Who did we do business with last year?
Oh, the Eastern, seventy-nine, twenty-four. They get up a dollar a ton from last year.
They do a good job?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're right, they're right in boards.
We've used them for, I used them the whole time I was. The reason why we use them is they've got a couple fellows that haul for them and they make return trips home to Waterboro. So we typically get our salt when we need it, where the guys out of Portland don't have anybody coming down this way. So it, it, and they've always been either the same price as the cog or right there.
And if you look at the other towns, it's interesting, because Will and I were going over this, like to look at Alfred, you know, looking at some of the different surrounding towns, but it's reasonable.
Have you got a recommendation, Will?
I recommend to go with the Eastern, Eastern Salt. Like I said, it's all, I think it's, it's up a dollar a ton from last year.
Yeah, see, if you look at these, you see how Alfred gets, you know, they're at eighty-four, forty-six.
Yeah, yeah.
All the times.
Eight, Alfred, oh, seventy, aren't they seventy-five, seventy-eight, or am I missing something?
Yeah, seventy-five, yeah, that's Alfred, seventy-five, eighty-eight.
Which one am I looking at?
How are you?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Oh, I was all across there, yeah.
Okay. So they got a little, but then you got other towns that are significantly more.
They'll use more, more usage too. That's why they get a better deal.
Oh, is that what it is?
Yeah, they run straight salt. So.
Is that what used to be Granite State?
Eastern material used to be Granite State, yeah. Yeah.
So is this for a specific quantity, or did they deliver what we need?
I usually just call them up and deliver what we need. They've, they've never held me to the fifteen-hundred ton before.
Okay, so the price is for whatever we decide we need?
Yeah, right.
We, we, we did estimate at fifteen-hundred tons, right?
That's what I usually tell them, I'd rather have a little bit more if we needed it than not enough, so.
Want a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we enter an agreement with Eastern Salt Company to acquire our salt for the coming winter season at a per-ton price of seventy-nine, twenty-four.
Second.
All in favor?
Go.
Thanks for getting that done, Will.
Yes, thank you for doing that, Will.
May I just ask, how much salt did we have left over last year?
Oh, what was in the shed?
Yeah.
How many signatures? You want to date?
Yeah, well, what I usually been doing is I usually haul in, because usually there's so much money left, I think there's like five-hundred ton in there. But what we had probably left over was probably like a hundred ton, so.
A hundred ton?
Yeah, then I hauled in a bunch.
So you had like a hundred ton left over from last winter, then you hauled in another four-hundred ton to get the money out of?
I still have quite a bit in the corner down there, so I'll probably call and get like a load or two and we'll probably be all right for a while.
So, so we're in pretty good shape?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're.
And then, as, sorry, per-use price, this should be pretty good?
Oh, yeah, this is good.
I would think this would be a pretty good.
I think last year's price, we were close to a hundred at first, weren't we?
Yeah, a hundred, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that was scary.
That was.
That second bidding company, I called them to get like a freshen price and they actually went up eight dollars a ton already, so. Well.
Am I getting that back?
Do I need one signature on it?
Ah, we like three, every, four, et cetera. Hang them all in there.
Okay, um, new business, what we done is we changed up, we're at Abbott Rhodes, first on the agenda there, so.
And I did, I'm sorry not to interrupt you, David, but I did send it to the Select Board on twelve-one, so some of you may have seen it.
Okay.
It's been in your inbox.
Yeah.
I saw it, I saw it in the email.
So.
I surprise myself sometimes.
Mr. Ward, do you want to come up here, please?
Hello?
So we've got a Article forty-three, a request from you for doing a culvert up on Abbott Road, correct?
Correct. It's actually on Jericho Way, but yes.
Jer, Jericho, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's not on Abbott Road?
It's. It's Abbott Road, Jericho Way, yeah.
That's part of the association.
Correct.
So unfortunately, what the situation we have here is, is the chair and the vice-chair live on that, on part of that association and the individual doing the work.
Is a voting member.
Is a voting member on the committee, so we can't, and of course, we're missing an individual from the committee with Adam's resignation, so we won't be able to get a quorum to vote on that issue.
Right.
So I think we talked about this last week, didn't we?
We did, yes.
We did, okay. So, um, so we're, we're going to end up having to do the, we're going to literally bypass the road committee at this point because there's no way we can make it feasible to work without, we would have to get another person on and it just, in this situation, we just feel just bypassing the road committee. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to get there Monday. I planned on being there Monday and I wasn't able to go up, take a look at it. Now, you have somebody doing the install this week?
Correct.
You do?
Yeah. I, I will tell you, it's a simple issue. It's a culvert that is too short. We're in danger of having trucks go down there and falling off the edges. So what we're doing is just replacing a fifteen-foot culvert with the same exact size culvert, but it's twenty feet long. So it'll be an extra three and a half feet on each side.
Yeah.
Before, I do have a question, the fact that the work is already scheduled for tomorrow. I know there was a time, which was my fault because I gave the chance to read it, but we had another situation where the work was already scheduled before the funds were approved. I, I just question that process, that there's now, at least to my knowledge, the second time that we're told we have to do a certain thing by a certain time because the work is already approved. And the question is, what if we as a board say it doesn't meet the qualifications, you folks have that work approved? So I just, I just caution for the future that dates not be selected until this is brought to the board and approved, because I, it does run into the issue. I get it, it's our job as select people and I take accountability for the last time and, and we know, but just for processes.
You know, Dan, I understand, if I understand it right, if they decide to go forward prior to an approval by the Select Board, it's their risk.
Okay, okay.
And so if they want to take that risk, that's their business.
Okay, as long as they're aware, I just want to.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great.
I just want to make sure, because I, I don't want them to be saying, well, you know.
No, 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 I agree.
Good reminder that until there's an official vote.
The job has to be done, regardless of who pays for it.
I think unfortunately.
Okay, good, that's fine. I just want to make sure that is clear and aware and that everyone's on the same page in that regard.
Unfortunately, typically, we don't get Article forty-three's in December.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I mean, ground should be frozen, there should be snow on the ground, you don't usually.
You don't get them in the winter?
Yeah, because you don't do roadwork in the wintertime. I mean, you could do them in the wintertime and prepare it for the springtime work, but this is kind of rush, rush. And, and I'm sorry, I kind of, I did tell Mr. Ward I was going to get up there on Monday and I didn't, I was working. And, but we really have to take a look at it before we approve it. And that, that would be the way to go, right? I mean, that's what we're making everybody else do, because especially with the, especially with the last one.
Thank you for looking at this.
We'll just reimburse them, right?
And you would be, you would be looking at it after the fact to approve the actual expenditure.
Is Mr. Langley doing the project?
Yes.
When do you plan on doing that project?
I'm.
Oh, yeah?
Marmalade. How about before and after pictures?
You think you can take a ride up?
Before and after pictures?
Mr. Langley, can you take some before and after pictures for us, please?
Thank you.
I have, I have some pictures also that I submitted to the DEP when we.
Just, just so we can see what's done.
Of course, yeah.
All right, this is what it was?
Right. You can be assured that we're not just replacing a culvert that doesn't need to be replaced.
Well, and.
They're not questioning.
We're not, we're not.
We're not suggesting.
I know you're not, I'm just stating the obvious.
We're just, we're trying to, we're trying to have consistency here and.
I get it.
And this one was rushed a little, little fast than the other ones usually are.
Yeah.
And, you know, and, you know, the last one I looked at, they did a good job. There was a couple questions and we did talk about that. And we, we just don't want anybody to do something and then all we go back and go, oh, you know what, uh, yeah, you're going to, you're on a hook for the other three thousand bucks because we can't do it. You know what I mean? So we want to make sure everything is legit. So circumstances, because of timing, frost is going to hit the ground, contractor's going to do it. Typically, this would be someone who would say, nope, you know what, you're going to hold up, but time is not going to allow that. So this one time, we're going to ask Mr. Langley and yourself to take some before and after pictures. Take a tape out, measure it out, so it's a fifteen-foot culvert, so we all know it, okay? Get elaborate, please. And, and then what we'll do is we'll, we'll, we'll vote to approve the funds contingent that the pictures and the job gets done.
Yeah. Okay?
Great. And, and I will say that we had this conversation about, you know, bypassing the committee and.
She was the boss.
We were fine with it, so we, Dave and I have had that conversation. I, the other thing I will say, although you're in a, in a voting mode, technically, under Robert's rules, you could have the meeting because people that abstained from a vote still count for quorum. So a quorum in this case is four.
A J, we, we talked about that.
Right, and so I'm just also saying, I understand that you didn't want a vote with just a couple people, but legally, that could happen.
With all of those issues, you don't want an appearance of a problem.
Of course.
And so it's, that's, we're trying to protect you as well, so.
We agreed, yeah.
We do know that, but we, we're, we're trying to like correct this bad appearance, you know, like.
Yeah, yeah.
We do all the time. And so, so we would just like to revert, try not to go that route, so this, this I think works way better.
That's right. We agree.
Thank you.
But, thanks.
So, do I hear, well, do, where?
You're not making a motion on that?
I thought we were.
We have to make a motion.
Yeah, contingent that.
Contingent, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Oh, I move that we approve Abbott, what was that, Abbott Road?
Abbott Road.
Abbott Road.
Jericho Way Association.
Jericho Way Association, the work for, is it three thousand?
Three thousand.
Three thousand dollars contingent upon pictures and the work.
Do I hear a second? Second in. All in favor?
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll follow up on the, I'll have them officially follow up next Wednesday, Jay, just to.
Now I see why you write things down, Tom.
I'm sorry?
Now I see why you write things down before you make your motion.
Yeah. Okay, now we're down to Sheriff, Sheriff's Law Enforcement Contract.
Okay, so in your hot little hands is an updated contract, estimated contract for the sheriff and the agreement between Chapley and Acton and the Sheriff's Department. Two of you have seen it several times, we've come back and forth trying to get some changes with not a lot of luck. We've got two weeks left. You don't have to sign it tonight, I think we've got two more meetings if we meet both weeks.
Is this the, like, final, like?
Yeah, and it's not so much the numbers, because we certainly have no control over that, it's the contract that I'm looking for some control on.
What, what was the prior contract amount for us? Do you have that, Jennifer?
I have it.
I just wanted to know what the percentage increase was, do you recall?
I know.
Let's get those numbers, we'll vote on it next week.
Okay.
I can tell you by looking at the meeting.
Oh, she could probably.
I can, well, no, I think you basically put it in general government this year, so I wouldn't be able to tell you more.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I don't have it, sorry.
So want, want to table that until next week to vote on that?
I'd like to be able to.
So that'll be if we happen to have a snow day, I mean, that's going to be our only reason for.
Table it anyways.
Having, having, it's going to be our only reason to have to meet if something goes astray with snow, so we have to get this done by the end of the year.
Okay. So we'll, we'll table that until next week. Appointments.
Okay, we have three appointments for you. The first is what Dan spoke of, having Mr. Ruma appointed to Forest Conservation Committee. I've taken the remainder of her term that was already coming due in June of 2024. That's the first one.
Wait for David to come back. Okay.
The second ones are, this is a, an agreement discussion that kind of went on between the code enforcement officer, Ryan Gleason and Adam Brock. So Ryan is technically currently a full planning board member while Mr. Brock is an alternate. Ryan, I've asked him to put something in writing, he have a copy of it, basically saying doing, due to traveling constraints, he wants to step out of his regular and step into the alternate. Mr. Brock is willing to take that. I put all the terms in there, they understand that their positions change with terms. So assuming you're okay with that switch, I have made appointments, new appointments for them based on that.
I'm reading that.
Yeah, I think they both agree to it.
I don't think we've ever done that before.
No, it was, it's just something that kind of came up based on Ryan's schedule.
Yeah.
Okay. The first motion is to appoint Joe Ruma to the Forest Conservation Committee member for a term effective through June 30, 2024.
A second. All in favor?
Okay. I want you, they can start that one down there and come back with it. The second is Ryan Gleason to move him from, move him into a alternate position for the planning board until June 30, 2026.
Second.
Okay. And the third nomination is, or position change is for Adam Brock to appoint him to the planning board for a term ending June 30, 2026.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, that works, that's good, that's nice that they're able to do that.
Yes, thank you to all three of those people. You just don't have enough to do, huh, Joe?
I'd like to see the committee go forward and do something.
Well, I'm sure you can add some value to them, Joe, thank you. All right, David, you want to go someplace else now?
The appointments, poll permit.
All right, this is for the intersection of Hopper Road and Independence Way.
Ticality.
I know how you love them.
Want to get someone else to do that?
I make a motion, we approve the poll permit for the corner of Independence Way and Hopper Road. Second. All in favor?